It's five o'clock. We've got this time on call, the Perry City Council Work Session for November the 16th, 2020 to order, and we have a oral session. Item three is items for review and discussion. Item three A is the Department of Public Works. Three A one is a concept design Carroll Street streetscape. Ms. Pfister? If everybody would speak into the mic so we can make sure we can pick up the audio for the minute, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. What I have for you this evening are conceptual plans for the redesign of the Carroll Street streetscape within our historic downtown district. Sort of the main drivers or the goals of this effort is to provide more efficient parking, reduce the width of the drive aisle, and then maximize our pedestrian spaces downtown. These two concepts that I'm bringing before you this evening are pretty different with the intent of showing you some different ideas, sparking some discussion. But we have the knowledge that what results of this discussion tonight may include components of both. You don't have to choose one or the other to proceed from this tonight. And this has been through a few different revisions with staff and our consulting engineer Saunders Engineering. But we've gotten to a point where we're ready for your review input and revision before moving forward. This hasn't been taken to any of our downtown merchants or the chamber yet. We're waiting for council's inputs and any revisions that might come from tonight before we take it, before any of them. So both plans are kind of going to have the first two pages which are the same, if you've noticed, if you've had a chance to look over them in your board pack. This shows the portion of Main Street that is just below Legacy Park that connects currently to the intersection of Courtney Hodges and Carroll Commerce. Right here as the sidewalk continuing across because we're going to propose that we close Main Street, which is shown in this next slide. From pretty much Evergreen Cemetery down to that intersection and turn Main Street to connect at Carroll. And this will go through the existing sort of driveline and parking lot of the old J.C.'s building just above Legacy Park. The new connection to Evergreen is kind of shown down here where the arches, the current arch to the cemetery, it is kind of shown off the page right there. But the connection will still be there to Main Street. And then it's kind of color coded just for you to be able to recognize elements, but the red color is new brick sidewalk. And again, this is the same for both concepts. So if you have any comments about this realignment, it might be a good time to kind of talk about those now. Is everybody on the same page? Good? So the first plan I'll go through is kind of what I would consider the more conservative of the two concepts because it retains a lot of the same structure as what's downtown currently. Just modifying the parking, the drive aisle widths, and some of the brick which we'll get to in a minute. So this is the entrance to the service station down here. Can you see my arrow? Here, and this is Marion Street. So this just modifies the drive aisle from about an 18-foot width down to 14 for one-way traffic. And then adjusts the parking angles to a 45-degree parking angle. The angles that they're at now makes it kind of hard for cars to pull in, stay within the lanes. And it creates a really long parking aisle which ate up a lot of our space. It adds brick sidewalks on both sides of the road to the connection shown here, which is at the Jernigan and the Ball Street intersections. So the color coding here can kind of show you what we're gaining in pedestrian space because the new brick is shown in that red color. The intersections kind of show a slight curve for the 800 block of Carroll. And that's just because the alignment was a little bit off at those intersections once you start to narrow the roads. The planter areas are retained and the parking spaces are within one or two of what's current. So the next block, so this shows a portion of the 900 block. So the next slide shows the remaining portion, the Swanson is kind of located down here. Crossroads Family Eye Care right here to kind of orient you. This shows again just a narrower drive aisle, a little bit more brick pedestrian space gained, and then the elimination of the mid-block crosswalk. Is there any questions about Concept A? So again, both of them have the same first two slides with the realignment of Main Street, the brick sidewalks to connect up. This scheme is a little more contemporary. We included some raised tree planters, which are shown by these little squares. And they would be in elevated soil areas to kind of promote a better planting environment in this urban sort of paved and asphalt heat island for the trees. But also would provide an opportunity to wrap those raised planters and bench seating. And as you'll see, we've lost, and this compared to Concept A, this is seven fewer parking spaces. But we've gained a sort of courtyard space here and kind of made these end nodes around any of the curb cuts a little bit bigger to kind of increase the pedestrian space. The next slide, you'll see a significant curve for the 800 block here. The introduction of a decorative concrete and brick accent space here in front of the courtyard lawn, the old courthouse lawn. Movable planters, so we have eliminated the existing in-ground planter areas, added some more of these raised tree planters. Installed curb stops, which is kind of hard to see if you're on this side of the room, so I apologize. But that would be the little concrete stops at the edge of the parking spaces to keep people from pulling too far up in their vehicle and encroaching on the sidewalk at the front of their vehicle. And then a portion of the 900 block is shown here. Oh, let me talk about coming spaces. So this is five fewer parking spaces to gain all this extra pedestrian space here. And then the second portion of the 900 block is shown. This is one less parking space than Concept A. And you'll see the curved alignment sort of allows you to capitalize on some of that pedestrian space by allowing the road to curve in the opposite direction of parking. So it looks like there's a lot more space in the curved alignment, but it would be a big change to the feel and the design of that streetscape. So I don't know if anyone has any questions? If you'd like me to go back and do something over again?
What are you going to do with the trees in Concept One? Are all the Chinese or whatever they're called going to come out? Is that your plan? That you're going to shut all those out?
I think that that would need to be a, I know that that would be a discussion point for sure for some people. But I think we need to plan to replace those trees.
But you're planning the trees back in there as more friendlier trees for that type of environment?
Yeah.
Well, in Concept One, you're going to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
The landscape would be redone. We would just retain the same space for the landscape.
And in Concept Two, you were talking about, are those just raised planters? Will we brick planters, put the trees in?
Mm-hmm. And they'd be probably five foot elevated for the tree. Would be a little bit planted higher than the surface. It gives them a little more planting depth and more space for their roots. But also kind of create some more visual space under the canopy because they're a little bit higher.
Councilmember, any questions about Concept One and Concept Two? We all need to pay really close attention to this because this is, this is a major change in one of our areas here.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the Legacy Park, you know, people like to come visit. Now, where are they going to be able to park at? Looking at it closer, that's not missing. About you've got Main Street connected to Carroll. And then right now, you can give a walk on the side. But if you eliminate all that, the people that park on Carroll and then walk back down to it, is that your plan?
Initially, perhaps. But we're also entertaining a small surface parking lot in the old J.C.'s building. But I believe that has to do with some encroachment with the railroad or contingent upon some approval for parking in that area.
So it's not a referral or not a referral?
Well, their evening is so wide that it comes into what would need to be used as a surface parking lot. So we'd have to get approval before we could pave a large portion and have, you know, several parking spaces in that area. But until we can determine that, it's just shown as eliminating the parking that's in the J.C. area and having people park along Main Street.
Thank you. Just wondering about that because I know, as you know, a lot of the people are going to come and they don't want to find a place to park. And they want to compete at the Legacy Park. So we want to make sure that whatever we do, we'll make sure safety. We want to bring their children. We want to make sure that whatever we do, we'll make sure safety for the public.
Sure.
If I may, Mr. King?
Yes.
May I pro temp? In addition to that, we're taking a look at changing the parking on Main Street to provide more parking. You may have seen the deal about great by the old courthouse where we had the bus parking.
Right.
That's been pulled out, I believe, hasn't Robert?
Yes.
That's just going to be regular parking. Plus, we're going to rearrange the parking on Main Street on the Big Indian Creek side once you cross over Ball Street. So not only that portion there that you have for the old courthouse, but continuing on and probably taking out the center lane once you get past Ball Street. And then having annual parking on both sides of Main.
Because I know, like I said, if we go back, when it's pandemic, though, we go back to full truck Friday, and we have a lot of people down that time.
Right. Right. Now, the overall general concept, though, is to encourage people who are coming to get out and walk. Because that is what a lot of the folks who are coming up are interested in doing.
Mayor, kind of just follow up on something, Councilmember. Mayor Pro Temp came to a question of parking. Probably how long this is, I heard you say a couple of times, it was a blues, I guess, five parking spaces here or an ankle there. And to follow up on your point, Mr. Gilmore, is it our idea that in losing those spaces, those would be compensated or with the additional parking that you just mentioned, please? And then that would also encourage more walkability downtown. Am I hearing this correctly?
If I may. Yes, that is correct. The overall general premise is that you will have more parking on the fringe of downtown and then people kind of walking in. Kind of like if you're going to Perry Highland State or a lot of these things, you know, you kind of park on the outside and you move in for a minute and you come back up.
So we're not just losing space?
No, no. There will not be a net loss of parking spaces down there.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmembers, any additional questions or clarification?
Have we worked up a price for A and a price for B on the left best?
No. I think that a lot of things are going to go into this. The colors that I was showing in Concept A and B are of, well, at least in A, added brick. But if you look at, you know, Ball and Jernigan have existing brick. And so there's going to be a lot of coordination and thought that needs to go into how we're going to approach the thresholds of where we leave the old and start the new. So it's really going to be dependent upon, you know, what concept and sort of what you all want to see. But I think that another sort of layer to all of this is all the other infrastructure that might be underground. So we haven't really, we were waiting to get sort of a direction on design-wise what you all would like to see. And I think that would be the next step is to sort of see some cost estimates for construction. I could get some material costs probably just based on square footage of brick hatches that are shown. But beyond that, it would be probably a longer process.
Just to follow up on that question. So your intention is to put the most needed watering system, electrical system, and everything else in place underground at the same time as you're doing the brickwork and everything?
That's right.
So we'll have that, have to run the water truck by the noon point?
That's the goal, yes.
Questions? So you guys want to think about this before you give any kind of direction? Do you want, I know this is the very first time you've seen it.
Uh, there. I would suggest, and like Ms. Pfister indicated, we are not looking for any position or anything from council right now. The first thing we're interested in is between these two concepts, is there something that council just does not like? Everybody with me? And if there's something that you just don't like, we'll take up. If it generally appears to be okay, as far as you can tell, Subject Two, like Councilmember Hunt said, going back to take a look and see. What our next step, as Ansley indicated, our next step is going to be taking it before the, show the DDA, show the downtown merchants. In other words, all the people who may be impacted by it and get some of their feedback. And then once we have that, the comments, then we would be back to you saying, here's what has been the impact with it. And what a recommendation would be or whichever way that you want to go. The other thing that's going to be very important to remember, too, is that this is going to be a phased project. Kind of going back on Councilmember Auburn's cause. It's not one time because that would be extremely expensive. But what we are interested in doing is having everybody aware of what the direction is, once it's determined collectively, what the direction is. And then we start proceeding along that route.
This kind of project probably would not happen again for, what, 57, 5 years maybe? So I think a dramatic change is very exciting. I hope to tell you that in the week. Once we get into, like, plan B, that, you know, payment in phases, that we would stop somewhere along the way with that. This is as far as we're going. But that we've been committed to go to. I mean, you know, Perry is already outstanding. Those drawings are amazing. People can talk about this in a good way.
Yes.
So in Mindreman, in Phase Two, we will take all the in-ground plantings out that we have today and we'll brick that, make it a safer environment. So I would assume that you're going to put plants in there to soften it up?
Right. Movable planters are specifically shown in Concept B just because some of those planter spaces were eliminated. But they can be easily incorporated into A as well.
And I would think, just, I'm not Harvard or, you know, anybody like that. But I would think that those, if we go with Concept One and leave some of them there, they desperately need to be replaced. They're there at the end of their life because I think most of those were planted probably 45, 46 years or somewhere in that. Because I think that was the last major design change downtown when they put all the bricks in and everything and set it for, didn't that correct? Just know more about '74, '73, '74. Is that about right, Mr. Gilmore?
That's perfectly correct.
Did you have to think that hard on that?
Not since you said it, Mayor.
Looking at the concepts and talking to Lewis means a great deal.
Yes, that's correct. That's what he said.
That's about the time they didn't leave or anything, so.
You're right. Following up some 50-year investment.
Well, and I think that having the Plan B puts a little curve, puts a little softness to downtown without everything just being so linear. I did want to ask you, what are those little purple blue dots at the corners of the intersections?
Those are the ranch ATAs that's the whole.
Okay. And how you have a little lighter darker green kind of shake, that's just the crosswalk, isn't it?
You know, your points will take on, this is safety issue, Mr. King's talked about that. But if you go down on Carroll Street many mornings at 7:30, people actually try to go through there 50 miles an hour. Because they'll try to make every one of those lights because they're going to get up and make a road. So this will cause sort of a chican type of field to, so you can't run from one red light to the other just wildly. That will improve the safety and the walkability of that area. So, Mr. Gilmore, where would you like for us to go from here?
If, we'll certainly go back, like you said, like Mr. Hunt had indicated, you know, if you're self-lying, walk in, you know, check and see. Unless there's some objection from council, we'll proceed about setting up meetings with the DDA. And any type of input or whatever that you may have or that you get, consideration of getting to us, and it'll all come back to you again. If that sounds like a workable plan.
Councilmember? I think we have, we've got to get approval from the DDA for it, I think, right? Yes, okay. I think we have to get approval from all stakeholders because this is going to have an impact on a large number of people. So I'd like to have their input. Mr. Gilmore, we have the grounds to move forward. Thank you, Ms. Pfister. It's a nice, that's a really nice concept.
Thank you.
Item three B is the office of the city manager. Three B one is special events presentation by Ms. Turk. We got to keep you safe, Ms. Turk.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. In your board packs, you have a document overviewing the Howawalita event that we hosted last month in Perry. Basically, this event was kind of a spin-off or a growth of the My Colorful Community event that we hosted in September. That one was successful. So with the cancellation of Sweets and Treats in downtown and a number of Howawling related events, we looked at the opportunity to host kind of an independent event down the Walita Trail. I would say it was a huge success in the three days that we hosted the event and saw a lot of families come out. There was a very diverse group that came out to participate, and we got a lot of positive feedback from it. So on that brochure that I made for you all, you can see just a couple of snippets of positive remarks that were left for us on social media. As Tabitha and myself can attest to, social media can sometimes be a very harsh place to work. So it's always really positive and really rewarding whenever we host an event that people respond to so kindly. Lots of people just reacting that it was a safe thing, that they felt, you know, very comfortable bringing their families to. A creative thing that got the kids out of the house, doing something that wasn't centered around candy, but outdoor activity. And a great way to showcase the trail itself. I spent a good, a good portion of the weekend out there in person. And I would say that at at least 75% of the people that I interacted with had never been to Rodeo Park before. So it's a really great opportunity to showcase a different park in Perry. I did put together a short video, if you all would like to take a couple of minutes to watch that, just some recaps of some of the families that came out and the chalk that was created. We did host two different books. One of them was bilingual, so it was a very inclusive event. And I'll just kind of let the videos be for us. So in addition to the two stories that we had, we also have the Overdose of Ghosts with the help of a couple of horse, we had a lot of fun making those trees and fun creative positions. And then, of course, we also did have a sponsor for that event who provided a bunch of frisbees and free swag, which was really great. You saw in that video that kind of the unintended effect of the free frisbees was lots of families just going and playing in the park, throwing a frisbee, which was just a really great sight to see. I wanted to share one additional piece of feedback that was given to us on social media that I didn't include in this post. The spouse of one of the project managers for the new Buc-E's that is coming to Warner Robins did bring their family to this event. They said that they've traveled the country for the last 15 years full-time with that position and gone to numerous cities, and they just wanted to share, they took a moment to give their feedback about how amazing it's been to spend the last year living in Perry and how excited they were to participate in something like Hallowealita along with the numerous other things that we have here in Perry. So it's really great that for a family that's probably traveled to lots of different cities of different sizes, that Perry really stands out to them. So that's something that we did for Halloween, and hopefully we can do something similar for Christmas or other upcoming holidays as well.
Councilmembers, questions? Comments?
Yeah. I think it was a very exciting, and I was down there a couple of times, and everybody was really enjoying themselves.
Thank you.
They gave them a chance to get out, get the children.
Next, you have your update on the Black History Month banner project.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So Ms. Vining Grace has approached me to assist her with a vision that she has had for Black History Month banners to be displayed during the month of February from 2021 forward on Courtney Hodges Boulevard and in our downtown area. I've been working with her on the project. We've come up with a design concept, but before we get to that, I do want to talk about the numbers real quick. We reached out to the company who has recently provided us with the holiday banners that are downtown. This is a vendor that Ms. Bryant found prior to her leaving the city. She had high recommendations for working with them, so they've been really great, really responsive. We've seen the finished project. Obviously, they do a great product, so we feel comfortable moving forward with this company. The quote that they gave us initially was about $1,000 higher, but just this afternoon I received the finalized quote, and it comes out to $2,574.60. And what this would include would be 14 custom banners for the downtown area. The downtown area, Ms. Vining Grace and myself have decided that those will host prominent people who have made impact on the city, so such as Councilwoman Vining Grace, Councilwoman King, several other staff members for the city of Perry, as well as business owners and prominent figures that would make place to be, or make sense to be placed in that downtown area. The reason that the price of these banners is a little bit lower than the Courtney Hodges banners is because they are slightly smaller in size. And then it also includes 30 custom banners for Courtney Hodges Boulevard. These ones would be slightly larger, so they're slightly more expensive. But all of these banners will feature a different graphic on each one, so they are unique. I was really shocked to see that this company didn't price, or didn't charge a setup cost, so I'm really excited about that. That was one of my biggest fears, and I know Ms. Vining Grace was concerned about colors. Like, if you print a T-shirt and it has too many colors on it, it can get expensive, but we would be paying just one flat fee for a color print. One of the things to note is that the shipping and handling is not included in this, so obviously the final cost will be slightly higher. We don't have quotes on shipping yet, and there is a two-week turnaround for shipping, so we need to make sure that we are ordering these banners, I would say, by no later than the end of the year, if not sooner. That way, we'd have plenty of time to receive those in January, just given everything with COVID-19, shipping can be a little crazy. So that gives us a really good buffer to also make sure that we have time to install them at the end of January so that come February 1st, they are up and ready to be displayed. And then one other note is that due to the unique nature of this banner project, we are ordering the exact amount. This is my first time ever working on banners, and Ms. Bryant did recommend ordering extras just in case any of the banners are weathered or stolen or anything bad happens to them. However, in our discussions, because each banner is a unique individual, we have no way of knowing if a specific person, say a Councilwoman King's banner, were to, you know, show whether signs have tears, rips, and we pull it down, we might not have an extra Pizz to put up. So we would have to replace those on a case-by-case basis, which would make the cost for that slightly higher if we need to do that. However, they would only be out for a month, so hopefully it would be years before any of them would need to be replaced. Any questions or thoughts about the quote itself?
Councilmember?
Okay. I've also attached two examples of the design. We've tried to keep it to where the design is very simple because we are working with 74 different individuals. So just for sanity's sake, we try to make it as easy as possible to drop a photo, drop their name, and drop their relative remarks about that person. However, to make it to where it's not so redundant and you're seeing the same banner over and over again, we do kind of want to play with the colors a little bit so that it would become like a pattern. We've got a white versus dark. We did use the city official colors to make sure that we are sticking with the Perry brand. So you've got those in front of you if you have any concerns about the design or any ideas that you would like for us to implement.
Questions, Councilmember? What do you think from us to see?
I believe I need approval to make the purchase.
Yes.
Councilmember? In current, excuse me, account for purchasing these banners and using them in our Black History Month celebration, Martin Luther campaign. Okay? You can move forward.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I know there's been a lot of work in this. I don't think anybody knows how hard you guys have worked in, and so we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would all like, would like to say also thank you. It's been a lot of work, and still a lot more work to do before we can complete the project.
Well, we thank you for your vision. I know that you've been talking about this for a number of years, and I think it's the appropriate thing to do, and I look forward to seeing that in our downtown area. Item 3B2 is consider establishing a community planning position. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor Council. I do not have a PowerPoint or any colored pictures for you. However, the administration is recommending to council that you authorize us to proceed with establishing and then, of course, advertising and filling a community planner position. The reason we think that this is necessary now is with the growth that we're having, particularly on each Perry area, and we've talked about that a number of times, plus the popularity and the growth in the downtown and other areas around the city and everything, I believe that it's time for us to get this position. This has been talked about, as councilmembers may remember, a number of years. It's one of the levels we're going to need to get, you know, professional position, and I believe the time for that is now. The funding for that would be, as I've indicated in my memo to you, from the insurance premium tax that we receive, which continues to grow as the city continues to grow. So I don't see this as a tax burden for the residents, so we recommend to you for you to authorize us to proceed. If you concur with that this evening, it will be something that will roll over to your meeting tomorrow, and you would need to focus on it.
Questions, Councilmember? Relative to this new position, please, what would be the approximate salary or salary range?
This position would probably be in the mid-30s to mid-40s.
And I guess my understanding, just trying to come wrong, per, er, streamline idea in process, relative to getting permits and planning and so forth, that's the idea?
Yes, particularly the upfront, it may be more difficult portion about getting information out to businesses, to groups, to developers about here is the process, here's some of the things you can or cannot do currently as your property is owned, and then what you would need to do. It would provide, I believe, Mr. Wood's department, a very good referral reference service for you to handle that type of stuff. But it's important to remember, historically it would come up, that the major focus relative to for staffing and activity is on the actual building permit and inspection process. And sometimes, as you're all familiar with, people can get started a little further down the road and then run into a problem there. And that's why we think this position would be very beneficial to them.
Thank you. So what's the question? Would host the free planning? I mean, I know this is a question to be answered later. I understand that, but I mean, would that be in their realm of responsibility to gather all the facts together for few applications?
I don't know that they're going to be able, they can coordinate that meeting and be involved in follow-up, written follow-up, but the individuals, firm marshal, building officials, that will need to be there.
Right. So who, I'm wondering, who does all of these things that we're envisioning this person would do? Who does these things now?
I don't.
What do you think?
Well, the other stuff that I don't get done because I'm doing these.
You do your real job.
Councilmember? I think it's, one of my concerns relative to the amount of growth that we've got coming at us, it's just starting, and it appears to me that Mr. Wood can work 24 hours in a day, but I don't think he would do a very good job doing it. So I think that we need to provide this type of support to ensure that we have the right sewer system in place, you know, that we have, you know, the right water system in place, looking at all those means for us and really planning out ahead rather than us reacting to that growth. And I think this is, personally, I think this is a credible position. Kind of like we give, Ms. Keen, that Mr. Wood, you know?
Exactly.
Actually, a serious, a serious question. What would be the qualifications of what does a person have to make this? Is there a certification or what would be the qualifications for this kind of position?
We'll need to kind of look through that, and typically planners have, planners have broad backgrounds, so for an entry-level position, they may require a bachelor's degree in planning or some related field, but we'll have to kind of look at that. And then there are opportunities. I don't think that at an entry-level position, you're going to find someone that has, for example, a sort of, a planning certification. That's something that will come along later, but that's certainly something that we can aspire to and have someone that can come in and gain the experience and knowledge to go through that process to become a certified planner.
Do you think we're in a position where we, they can get on-the-job training, or we need somebody who knows what they're doing and play right?
Well, I think what we're probably talking about is someone who is an entry-level position, so someone that's right out of college or has some limited experience in planning. And then they can, they're obviously going to build some experience, some on-the-job training based on what we do here in Perry, what our orders are, but they should have some experience and knowledge of what the, what the profession does when they come in.
So the job description isn't thoroughly developed?
No, it's not. And I'll be working on those.
Yeah, I share Ms. Peters' concerns. I'm not so sure that we're at a position that an entry-level job might be very difficult as fast as we're going to be growing. So I don't know what salary difference would be with somebody with at least some experience rather than just a entry-level job.
Based on the way we've established other job descriptions for the tier level of, you know, level one, level two, senior level, I've gone on to the American Planning Association website, and they've got some job descriptions, general job descriptions of those, of those different levels. And so I'll be using those as kind of a guide to establish a proposal, proposals for these, for this position, those different levels. My anticipation is that, well, typically what I see in the, where planning positions are advertised, they sometimes advertise as planning level one slash level two. So you get the, you get a wider range of applicants, and you may find someone that fits more into a level two than a level one that you're going to find. So we can set it up to look at a wider range of possibilities.
Additional questions, Councilmember? Here, at this time, what, what is your purpose? Do you want to concur with this recommendation and move it for a vote tomorrow night? Are you ready to do that? Okay, Mr. Gilmore, would you put it under agenda tomorrow, tomorrow night, please? Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Thank you, Mr. Wood. I think that's an important position to go forward. Item 3B3 is review of organization. This is Perry Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, in your board pack, you have a information from me, which is following up on the continuation of your review of each of the authorities, commissions, or wards that you appoint the members to. One that you have in your packet now is the Perry Area Convention and Visitors Bureau authority. Went through and provided information to you on the standard areas. The appointment process and all that type of stuff are fine, you know, as far as process and all that type of stuff are fine, you know, as far as the administration is concerned. The only recommendation I would have that we would send over to them, because they are a separate authority, would be to take a look at some of the tasks that were outlined in the original legislation that set them up, if you may ever take a look at the back part, I think it's exhibit B, you know, list that, and the authority take a look at that and include that as part of their operating process. You know, for example, like one of the things they talk about there in the original legislation is to make recommendations to the city relative to tourism promotion, and I think, you know, with the input and various groups they have, that'd be a good idea for them to do.
Questions, councilmembers? Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Item four, councilmember items, Ms. Bonner.
Well, I would just like to say, the park, we did the signage, revealed the signage for Legacy Park on Thursday, it was well attended. I appreciated the comments from some of the veterans that were there. After that, I got several emails about people that wanted to help as well as donate funds to our next project and dealing with that. So I would like to thank you guys that showed up as well.
Well, thank you. Can you send them to Mr. Gilmore's address?
City address, not my first residence.
Sure, his position of office, we would appreciate all donations, thank you. Anything else?
No, when I told them we get closer to face to, I would send out some information, as well as the city would send out some information, to let them know what's next.
We really appreciate that. Glad to have our citizens engaged in that project, because it's all up in, it's where we're going to memorialize our veterans and also people who made significant contributions to the city of Perry. Be glad to have people participate in that and take ownership. Mr. Jones?
Can't follow that later, I have not.
Mr. Hunt?
One little item, uh, Tucker, where the tennis courts are, that hole, you play there, the city can, building in, and it's sunk, it needs attention.
The hole, and Tucker by tennis courts, it needs attention. Mayor, for Tim Keen?
Yes, I had one thing, yeah, someone approached me and asked me about going to Zeitgeist, if you're going down Sammert Boulevard to go to Zeitgeist, you had to go all the way up under the interstate, and then turn, take a U-turn and come back to go into there. They ain't got no way to get in and out, you know, and that's the only way you can. I don't know what they were looking into that, but they were looking at, that might be, because now we've got the home one there, I know the people can't go in the interstate later, they ain't got no way to get in there from the U-turn. That's something we kind of look at, somebody that really brought a lot of attention, how come we got to go way down there and take a U-turn and get back into Zeitgeist? And then when you get ready to get out, a lot of time you can't get out, you've got the traffic just right there, and then you gotta wait for a while before they get out, and then the light changed in, it's a long line, they gotta sit there for five to ten minutes before they can get out.
Mr. Mayor, for Tim?
Yes, sir.
I would be happy to pass on your request on behalf of the city DOT. However, for the last fifteen years, we have been talking about that DOT. Some councilmembers may remember the efforts we made talking about getting a traffic light and cut over for St. Patrick's Drive to take you across there. DOT's position is absolutely none. Their first priority relative to control are for the on and off ramps on I-75 onto Sammert. The next area they have concern is the amount of space needed for left-hand turns, and so consequently, they have advised us that they are not going to authorize any other cuts in the meeting. We also had talked about a cut at, I think it was like Plaza Drive, you know, and DOT said no one there. Be happy if you'd like us to send something again, just don't expect an answer.
But you know, when you come across from Walmart, you come across the street, you still can't turn to go to Zeitgeist that way.
Right, that's right.
I think he's looking at putting that, that's, I have an interest in the back of that, another way to get in or exit.
Well, either way, I mean, people are complaining about entering, but you know, because that's going, we've got to come all the way around it, and pick up your food, you know what I mean? And so, I don't know, like you said, if DOT is not in agreement with it, I guess we're kind of stuck in a corner right now.
But I would love to give you more positive, but they are not willing to make any change on that at all.
In eleven years, I haven't been successful with any requests. Especially out of Sammert, I think, they're difficult down there. We will, thank you for bringing this in.
Mrs. Peters?
One item that I'm, I am sure is not a city council item, I just want us all to be aware of this, that my husband and I were going to do some fine dining at the Waffle House the other day, and an ambulance had been called right before we got there, and they jumped out with the gurney, they could not enter the Waffle House through that series of doors that they had. You know, they got the first door open, but they couldn't turn the gurney to get into the second door. And, I mean, first, I understood they're stunned because they, they couldn't move that, and they were kind of like, okay, now what are we going to do? So at that point, I exited the Waffle House parking lot, because it was just too stressful for me, I don't know how they resolved it, but, you know, the woman was laid out inside, and they couldn't get the gurney through the door. It can't be the first time that's ever happened at a Waffle House, but, I know they're all shaking the same, but I just thought y'all might want to know, if you ever need an ambulance to find out who the guy is. That's just a public service announcement.
Mayor? Chief Parker, want to explain how they take care of that?
I'll try. Basically, I'm sure what they did was pick the lady up, or it was a lady, or they can use it, sometimes we use a chair carry, you know, but if she was unconscious, they probably just picked her up the best they could and took her out and put her on the stretcher that way.
Yeah.
But yeah, that is an unfortunate fact that some places we can't get into, even some people's homes, you can't get them in, so we just have to do what we have to do, so, yeah.
That was just startling, you know, I would have never thought about that, but it just, it wasn't a bad end.
Yeah, it's unfortunate.
If I may, Mayor, I'd like, Mr. Keen's request, the DOT. I think it would be beneficial for us to pass that on to the Waffle House corporate people. Because one, it's obviously a concern, not you, certainly not just for that patient, but overall, and I'm sure Perry can't be, you would be the only place that that could be a problem.
You know, I think this, we think it right, because I think it should be consensus, I think all those councilmembers, I don't know where you can get a letter, to have that situation that, we want to bring your attention to it, and make you feel well that we're concerned about it, because, like you said, you'll never know, we're going to get them up out, and something happens to them, and then it's a matter of life and death, I know Mr. Parker realized that, it's a matter of life and death, they can get them, they can get them out, they can get them to the hospital, or get them out there so the people can take care of them.
I just couldn't have a car walk away and watch all that happen, so I hadn't been born. Let's rock, she's doing fine now.
Thank you. Dr. Auburn?
I'm like Robert, I can't follow that.
Mr. Gilmore, do you have anything else for us to see?
Yes, sir. Councilmembers, at you, unless you do not want to proceed with this, at your meeting tomorrow, I'd like to recommend to you all that the council establish a moratorium on self-storage facilities until we can get that and get some information to you in the planning commission. The concern that the administration has, and this is similar to the larger apartment complexes, we came back to council and said we need to have a little more oversight on them, is that there's a fairly wide range of land uses, they currently allow self-storage. For a long time, it was not too much of an issue, but now with people having smaller living areas and more stuff, with just more of a demand for them, and again, it's not that we want to, we don't recommend to ban them, but I think it would be good to take a look at some of the options you could have for controlling them. Last thing we would want to have, I believe, or only under certain types of circumstances and everything, is to have kind of a standard metal self-storage facility going right next to a nice residential neighborhood, or locating and going in by plus apartment complexes and those type of things. So unless you have any objections, excuse me, we'll bring that up and request that moratorium, and that follow the standard process like we do with moratoriums, which is, is that if anyone has applied for one to come in, and of course it goes ahead, we would go through, get some suggestions from planning commission, then we'd come back to you all and try and get it taken care of as soon as possible.
Dr. Auburn, if I'm wrong, but we have, we've got a couple of applications around there, or do you have?
There is one for sure, that went to the planning commission last week, it will be coming to you all at your first meeting in December, it's on Perry Parkway. Building itself is setback, this is in the street, and they show you the design of the main building, which is a fairly attractive building. There was, I received a call last week about another proposal near there, I'm not sure if they filed an application today or not on that particular one, but I have had a couple of, several people that have called and asked about it.
And do we not have one going in our house and labor as well?
There was a reselling for one, but we have not seen anything for, for that, on that project.
I guess, you know, it just came to our attention, because if we go through one of Robyn's, it seems like they're like mushrooms, they're coming up on every, every corner there and with very low control, and I think we need to get ahead of it, so like Mr. Gilmore says, I'm not, I have no interest in banning it, but I think we ought to be selective of where they can go in within the city. And so I just think it's something important that we look at, make sure that we understand it, and then make sure we have the ordinances in place to reflect what we would like to accomplish in the city.
How long, more, 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 please?
Probably our standard eighty to hundred days, something like that, maybe a little faster than that. You may remember the last few moratoriums we had came through, or handled quite quickly.
They were a lot faster than eighty days.
Yes.
Councilmembers, any additional questions or concerns? I think we need, Mr. Gilmore, have your concurrence to move forward?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore, you have your announced concurrence to move forward, is that? Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Newby, anything to say before?
Yes, sir, nothing tonight.
Assistant City Mayor, Mr. Smith, anything for you?
Nothing tonight.
Oh, thank you, appreciate it. Item five, our department, his staff items, Ms. Keen?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Worley?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Mr. Wood, any additional?
Yes, sir.
Keith?
Yes, sir, one thing, I really hate to have this item, because it's from Georgia DOT. But every three years, they require that, that we go through the city streets, verify speed limits, and submit a, a listing that they turn around and approve, and that's the, one of the purposes of that is, these are the streets where the police department is authorized to run speed enforcement, it's also tied to various other things. So my staff has compiled all this and sent it to GDOT, we got it back today, and we've reviewed it, a couple of pin and ink changes, which is what they requested that we do. The process for this is that it has to be signed by mayor and council, and then we send it back to GDOT, they do the final approval, and then it's good to go for three years. It actually, I think, goes into, it goes, the current one goes out on December thirty-first, so the new one starts at the beginning of the new year. The, even though we told them we have six councilmembers in addition to a mayor, we've got a signature page that has four councilmember slots, so if y'all are of a mind to sign, this may be at tomorrow's meeting, I'll try to get that corrected, it has to come from GDOT, not from us, because it's a watermark document. And, so, that said, we compiled it, we verified it, once this is done, DO, it ties in to the school zone project, because GDOT didn't want to move forward on that until the new list was in place, so. If you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, that's basically what I know about this, so.
Councilmember, any questions?
Excuse me, sir?
Speed limit going to change?
The speed limit's going to change?
Our body will change.
No, sir, we went, we had to go through and verify them, so some of them have changed since the last list was done, but we're not requesting any of them changed in this document.
Thank you, Keith.
Okay, and that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Chief Parker?
Nothing tonight, sir, thank you.
Ms. Hart, any communication?
No, no, sir.
Ms. Fitz, any condition on the line? Ms. Harden?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Ms. Murray, anything?
Nothing, sir.
Is there anything else that needs to come forward? Tonight, everybody, there are two council meetings tomorrow night at five o'clock, and our council meeting is at six o'clock, and we encourage the citizens to participate in the meetings, as all our meetings are moved to the public. Is there anything else that anybody would like to bring before us this evening? If not, I'll understand, I'm voting to the chairman.
So, thank you.
Motion to say, I'm ready to leave everybody.